Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the April 25th, 2011 meeting of the Orlando City Council. Today, we're going to begin the meeting with the invocation offered today by Reverend Mark Crutcher, Senior Pastor of Mount Olive AME, which is located on West Church Street in District 5. Mount Olive has been in existence for 130 years. Reverend Crutcher has served the congregation for two years. The church participates in several community service projects, including after-school tutoring, summer enrichment program, and family support activities with, in partnership with the Orlando Housing Authority. And I see Ed Carson out there, so thank you for the work of the Orlando Housing Authority as well. And I can tell you, in my opinion, they have the best Sunday morning breakfast of any church around, so I haven't, I've been dieting a little bit, haven't sampled it, but I would suggest that anybody that likes biscuits and gravy or other things might come join a service over there. Reverend Crutcher's invocation will be followed by the pledge led today by District 4 Commissioner Patty Sheehan. Would everybody please stand?
And we come today to say thank you for life, for strength, for health, and just for allowing us to share and fellowship with one another. We come asking that your presence would be with us in the midst of this meeting, and that you would open to us your knowledge, your wisdom, and understanding. We come acknowledging that we're not sufficient by ourselves, and we ask for the unity of your love to just abide with us. And we ask so God for guidance for those who have to make decisions, particularly in times when situations aren't the best for us. And we've been going through some tough times, but we know that better days are ahead of us. And we ask that even in this meeting, that you allow decisions that would be made, that would be beneficial to help all of us, to bring all of us closer to one another, to help all of us be able to work together. And we ask so God that you would just allow us to be able to make decisions that provide jobs, provide inspiration, provide security, provide safety, and just provide a sense of wellness in the midst of your people. We ask that you would just help us as we go forth to make plans and to fulfill plans that's going to build lives and give hope to people, even in times when it seems despair is on every corner. And we just ask that you would just allow us to just celebrate one another, and you in the midst of our presence. Bless us today. Let us say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond, Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Sheehan, Commissioner Lyneum, Commissioner Ings, Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business will be to consider the minutes from the
So move.
On second. April 11th, 2011 workshop agenda review and city council meeting. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Hall in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. And so the motion carries. And if everybody could make sure they silence to their cell phones, unless you have an exceptionally cool ringtone that we might want to hear in the middle of the meeting. Otherwise, please silence those. Okay, let's move to awards presentations and recognitions. And this one is going to be introduced by Leela Allen, and it is Housing and Community, National Community Development Week. And I think as a council, we are appreciative and fight for our CDBG funding every year. That seems like, I don't know, ever since I've been mayor, it seems like it's been at risk in the federal budget, and it plays such an important role to so many different organizations. And it's one of those programs where instead of the federal government dictating how funds are spent in what areas, it's an opportunity for the local communities, the local governments, to distribute the funding to appropriate agencies and needs that are better determined on a local basis than all the way from DC. So we're very appreciative of that and want to recognize our Community Development Week. Leela.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Good afternoon, Commissioners. And first of all, I would like to thank each of you for your advocacy for the Community Development Block Grant Program. As Mayor Dyer has said, it certainly is one of those federal programs that's been under scrutiny recently. And most recently, we have been notified that we will receive a 16% reduction. But with that, we will still continue to do the work that we are allowed to do in our community. And National Community Development Week is an opportunity for local communities to highlight the work that is accomplished with the Community Development Block Grant. This year, that week is April 25th through April 30th. And the city of Orlando has three activities scheduled. Mayor Dyer will host an event at Shepherd's House, which is a project that has been completed by Catholic charities on tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. On Wednesday, we will be at Quest Incorporated at 10:00 a.m. And on Thursday, we will be at the Villages of Orlando at 10:00 a.m. All three projects were partially funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program. In this community, we partner with not-for-profit organizations in order to accomplish our work. And today, I have the privilege of having Otto Woodley, who is president of Frontline Outreach, to talk to you a little bit about the partnership that his organization has had with the city of Orlando and the great success that it has had. Following Mr. Woodley's comments, Mayor Dyer, would you read the proclamation?
Thank you, Leela.
Good afternoon, Commission members. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you the value of CDBG investment in the inner city. There's a quote by Dr. Benjamin Mays, who was the President Emeritus of Morehouse, that said, "You are what you aspire to be, not what you now are. You are what you do with your mind and what you do with your youth." And your investment of dollars in CDBG projects at Frontline has been a significant investment in youth over the last 12 years. In the packets that you've received, I've outlined all of the points that I'm going to make, in addition to giving you pictures of how Frontline looked before CDBG investment and what it looks like now. But here are the points for the audience and for those who are listening. Frontline is located in an area with low to moderate income, with eight apartment units and government housing, with over 1,800 units in one square mile. Additionally, that area is an area that is socially and economically challenged. Frontline has been in that location over 30 years. More than 50% of those dollars that have been invested, which are $800,000 over the course of 10 years, have been spent with minority or small business contractors who are from the community. Those $800,000 that were invested at Frontline and in children has attracted an additional $480,000 in support. And we've been able to leverage over $1.5 million of additional private support from businesses and philanthropic sources. Additionally, Frontline was involved and has been enrolled in the Enterprise Zone Program through the governor's office as a result of the CDBG dollars that were located. Close to 300 young people have been employed and equipped because of the improved facility. The facility being improved facilitated partnerships with Orange County Head Start, with Florida Citrus Sports, and with other community agencies because of the campus and the physical grounds being improved. And most of the people who currently work, when you talk about a economic development impact, most of the people who work at Frontline Outreach are people who are native of that part of Orlando. So your support, your investment has made a significant difference over the last 10 years. And specifically, as I said, it attracted a significant amount of money that would not have come into the inner city had you not invested. So I thank each of you, Commission members, and many of you I know personally, thank you for your commitment, because if not, Frontline would not be the organization that is, that it is today. There's a link in the presentation that I gave you that gives you a full view on YouTube of how the building has changed over the course of the last decade. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Otto. This is a National Community Development Week proclamation, whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program enacted into law in 1974 provides local governments with financial resources to address diverse housing and community development needs of low and moderate income persons. And whereas the CDBG program has been administered by the city of Orlando since 1975 and positively impacted the city and its citizens, and whereas the CDBG program addresses the prioritized needs as identified through citizen input and seeks solutions through private-public partnerships, and whereas the CDBG program is an invaluable planning tool, critically important to ensuring the development and revitalization of the city of Orlando's neighborhoods, and whereas the week of April 25th through the 30th has been reserved for recognition and appreciation of the program, now therefore be it resolved that I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, do hereby proclaim the week of April 25th through the 30th as National Community Development Week in Orlando, and call upon all citizens of our city to join in recognizing the CDBG program and its importance to our community. Come down and do a photo with Otto. Okay, the next two, Marcia has, and the first is recognizing one of the great community organizations that we have that was recognized nationally for the good works that they do here in Orlando. Marcia?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And Commissioners, good afternoon. It is my pleasure to have this opportunity to introduce, as Mayor Dyer said, one of the great organizations in our community, and one that really needs no introduction, and Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida. But we are asking today if you would listen closely and get a briefing from Dave Krepko, who is the CEO of Second Harvest Food Bank. He's here to give you a brief update, and also Mayor Dyer is going to present an award that Second Harvest received, the Congressional Hunger Center's Victory Against Hunger Award, which was presented to Second Harvest Food Bank and by the Congressional Hunger Center, but we're going to make it official here in the city of Orlando. But at this time, I would like to ask Dave if he would come forward, and he has some of his board members and staff members with him. He'll introduce them, and we also have some packets for you, which I'll pass out afterwards to follow up on Dave's information to you. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor Marcia, city council members, and the audience. Glad to be here, and it's great to have our current board chair, Susan Reimer Sifford, Susan Stan, and our incoming board chair, Brad Butterstein, and two of our hard-working staff, Maria and Sasha, part of a huge team at Second Harvest Food Bank that makes this all work. I'm just going to take a couple minutes to tell you about one of the most exciting things that we're working on, and that is a future facility for Second Harvest Food Bank. Prior to the recession happening, we saw a rapid increase in the need for emergency food in this community and the surrounding counties. And when the recession hit, that just put an exclamation mark on it. And according to our latest hunger study, in the past five years, the need for emergency food, the number of people that needed help, has risen by 152%. That 152%, the number behind that is that in the course of one year, in central Florida, 732,000 different individuals needed help with food, and many of them, several times during the course of the year, many, one in four are children. You know, kids are in circumstances way beyond their control. Many are senior citizens trying to live on fixed incomes, working families, folks that are underemployed, trying to make ends meet, people trying to find jobs. We've been doing due diligence for the past three years on a future facility. We're located in two different buildings, and we need to consolidate for even more efficiency during these tough times and looking to the future. And we need more space to, to launch new innovative programs as well. And I'm so glad to announce that we're, we're making really good headway. And we have a capital campaign with a total price tag of $15 million on it, relatively small when you compare it to a lot of other things going on in the community. And relatively small when you think of it in terms of a return on investment, because for this campaign, we are not asking for gifts. We're asking for investors, people who want to invest in this community, and we want to show a return on this investment. And when we project the return on investment over the next 20 years for this future facility, it will have a return of 14 to 1. That's a 1,400% ROI. That, that is measured in terms of, you know, what the operating costs are going to be over the next 20 years against the in-kind value of the food that would be provided to the community. And right now, we're providing to 500 different feeding programs in the area. Over 20 years, 1.4 billion, that's not million, that's billion dollars worth of food, in-kind food, will be provided, and that's a conservative estimate. That's $1.4 billion that our local government certainly doesn't have, our state government doesn't have, our national government doesn't have to provide. And that is due possible to the phenomenal in-kind resources of the food industry across the country and in this area. Lots of, we've designed opportunities for increased community engagement. We see volunteerism up in central Florida, and right now, we have to turn away groups of 100 volunteers or more. This new facility, we'll be able to engage groups of 200 to 300 people. And there's no better way to get people engaged through volunteer work. And, and, and community space for other nonprofits to have their events there, or us to have larger groups in, we will be weaving into the new food bank nutritional education of how, what kind of calories people, you know, can be eating, and just shedding light on that whole topic. A new concept of a community kitchen where people, there will be job training and revenue generation realized, along with life skill training. But in the end, it's not about the building. It's about the community, and it's about what happens outside the four walls of this new facility. And the, as I said, the return on investment is just phenomenal, and it's, it's conservatively estimated at 14 to 1. I do have two requests, two very specific requests of the city council and to the audience. Number one, tell people about this. If you have questions, contact us. We would love to show you the details behind what I just went over. And two, the second specific request, please help us open doors to people who may want to get engaged as an investor in this campaign. So Mayor and city council, we thank you for your service to the community, especially during these phenomenally challenging times and tough decision-making times. Thank you.
That could not be a more perfect segue, as Dave was talking about all the great community volunteers that volunteer at Second Harvest and make such an impact. And that brings us to National Volunteer Month in the city of Orlando, and we have, oh gosh, a lot of our city volunteers that serve on boards, or at Lou Gardens, or on the CERT teams throughout our community that are here today in recognition of Volunteer Appreciation Month. And we certainly want to thank them and all of the people that give of their free time to make our community a better place. So thank you for being here. And Marcia, if you would introduce the prop.
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioners, thank you for your support of all of our volunteers, because they are very, very valuable, as the mayor said. And each year in April, at this time of year, when the whole nation celebrates Volunteer Appreciation Month, we like to thank our valuable volunteers, our citizens and our employees who are volunteering either in city operations or out in the community as city employees. Last year, we had more than 600 citizen volunteers that came and gave countless hours to our city operations, our city boards, our, working as our coaches, and various volunteer opportunities across the city. And we want to thank them because today, we know that this, our city is better because of each of their contributions, and each of them are here today because they care about the city. We appreciate all of the volunteers, all of the citizen and city volunteers, and we hope that many of them will continue to serve as part of Mayor Buddy Dyer's Orlando Cares, which is the new volunteer initiative that was kicked off by the mayor in March, and will be focusing on youth education and youth crime prevention, and I know that some of you have already signed up. So thank you for your volunteer service to date, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Mayor, if you would please read the proclamation, and then we'll have you come up for a picture.
Thank you, Marcia. Whereas President Barack Obama has designated the month of April as a time to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers throughout our nation, and whereas last year nearly 63 million Americans gave their time and service to our nation, which is a testament to the compassion and generosity of the American spirit. And whereas the city of Orlando commemorated National Volunteer Month and recognized its valued volunteers at the annual mayor's volunteer appreciation reception on April 25th, 2011, and whereas the city of Orlando is committed to encouraging volunteerism among its employees, citizens, partners, businesses, organizations, and whereas the city of Orlando is a proud member of the Cities of Service Coalition and is implementing the Cities of Service Initiative, Orlando Cares, to engage more residents and partners in impact volunteering. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim April as National Volunteer Month in the city of Orlando, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer and put their hearts into volunteerism in their communities throughout the year. If all the volunteers would come up, I know we've done a lot of individuals, but let's do one big group photo. Alrighty, that thinned the crowd out a little bit. Let's move to the mayor's update, and I want to recognize and thank all of our administrative professionals here at city hall. This is Administrative Procession, shouldn't be Professionals, just seeing if you were wait there, Commissioner. Administrative Professionals Week, so I want to thank you all for your hard work and dedication to our city and our community. SNAP Orlando Projection. I'm pleased to announce that SNAP is returning to downtown Orlando, and as some of you may remember, SNAP is a photograph celebration showcasing the work of renowned photographers and images from our great local talent. And this year, we're looking forward to the addition of their 3D projection event, so on Wednesday, May 4th, at the Plaza Courtyard in downtown Orlando. Come and admire the view. Actually, they have more than I should tell that's going to happen here, so just come on out, and you're going to see a modern 3D twist that is going to be extremely entertaining. On May 14th, the Sixth Annual Mayor's Neighborhood and Community Summit will be taking place from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're moving back to the Doubletree Hotel across from Universal Studios, and I'd like to encourage all of our residents to come and get informed, and you can go to register at cityoforlando.net, or there will be onsite registration on day of, so cityoforlando.net for that, and the cost is $5, which includes breakfast and lunch, so it's a pretty good deal. And then finally, I want to encourage everybody to support our Orlando Magic when they play game five, hopefully out of seven, in the first playoff series. So we will continue to encourage people to dress in Orlando Magic gear, and blue and white on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday of this week. And I was actually hoping to have this beard for a couple of months and not just two weeks, so.
It just already grew.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So go Magic. With that, we're going to move into the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council, and we give each of our Commissioners an opportunity to comment on items that are on the
4, and I've been working on it too, Commissioner, and delighted to see that moving forward and hope I can run on that darn thing soon, we can get that completed. I want to, on item I4, I want to commend Commissioner Ortiz on the Semeron improvements that are coming forward and all the hard work he's done on that. I think it's a great thing. And I actually had something really, really special happen over the weekend, Easter weekend. And Ed, if you can run the pictures, please. We work with the Regal Swan Foundation, and we have the Swans of the World Habitat in Lake Yola Park. And one of the rarest pair is called the Black Ringneck Swan. It's actually from South America, and that's our new baby at Lake Yola Park. Isn't he precious? I don't know if it's a he or she yet. But it's actually unusual to have a rare pair of swans like that actually have offspring that quickly. So I think it just shows what a great job that the Regal Swan Foundation is doing with the swans at Lake Yola Park. And again, this is our first baby. We don't know if it's a boy or girl of the ringnecks. But if you get a chance to go by Lake Yola Park, there's lots of new signets out there, and they're actually wonderful. And I want to encourage anybody to, we had a problem with the swans being stolen at Lake Yola Park last year. So if you see anybody messing with these nests, please call 911 immediately or let the park staff know because they're precious and we need to make sure we take good care of them. But that's our new baby, and if you get a chance to check it out, it's over by the duck pond in Lake Yola Park. So I want to welcome our new addition to Lake Yola Park. And if you get a chance to go by, it's actually a wonderful sight. And Patty and Queenie are proud parents, and yes, Patty is named after me, but that is the Irish male spelling of Patty, P-A-D-D-Y. So he is a boy. So anyway, thanks for running that, Ed. And thanks, y'all, for indulging me, but I am a proud swan grandma. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will move to District 5, Commissioner Linum.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and council. Mayor, your beard just started coming out, looking like a real beard. So I hope you, you know, you had a little problem with it.
I have Dwight beat right now.
So you must have been using something to make that little growth stuff. But it's coming out all right. Whatever, you know how you put on that little plant, sprinkle water on it and the little chia. But if they win tomorrow, I know it'll start growing even bigger. So we're going to find out what you're putting on it. But I thought it was a great idea, and thank you for pulling A4. And thank you for helping put the pressure on Monali to get another breakfast. So maybe when you're ready to go, I'll, we'll head over there, put some pressure on Pastor Crutcher to get some more breakfasts. My vote, I didn't know whether I was clear, my no vote was on B13, not B14. And it was because it wasn't clear whether the Davy Group was out of Ohio, Kent, Ohio, or somewhere local. It said one thing in the minutes and something else, but it wasn't local. And I thought by the time we finished bringing people from Clearmont and everywhere else, I mean Clearwater, we could have it local. I want to sort of jump again into the agenda, and that was to, out of the agenda, was to say thanks to staff for so many, many things, and Kevin for meeting with me and Commissioner Diamond at lunch. And we just discovered there are just a few things we want to tweak, and I'll share that with the post-it meetings with Commissioner Ings, Sheehan, and Ortiz. And Mayor, have we, did we do that 5K since we were last here?
I think that was in between.
Did we have a council meeting? In between?
Yeah, so I don't think we've had a council meeting since we had the 5K run.
Right. He was running and I was walking, but I finished in, I think it was 46 minutes. How many minutes did it take you to finish?
Hmm, a few less than that, but not too many less.
Okay. So hey, Dave, I walk real fast. So I just want to say thanks, and I know some others are coming up, and we want to encourage our citizens to get out and participate in whatever health walk or runs you have, and whatever you can do in your districts or just in downtown in general. I believe that's pretty much it. There's a number of good things. Agenda item A2, let me share this with you. On the minutes, this AIDA group, Construction Group Mayor, was terminated. And I don't know whether you got an email or not, and it said it was, it had to terminate its business, the non-payment of work at the Amway Center. I know we're working on that, but we really don't want to see any more small business go under because of all the complexities due with closing out these accounts. So if we can move that on, and I know a lot of work is moving forward, so I want to say thank you for that. The rest of the agenda seems, it's a good day for us, and I appreciate all your work.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 6, Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. Getting right into the agenda, item B4. It's good to see that we're looking for some funds for the Southwest Police Substation. And Byron and Kevin and I have talked on that, so hopefully we can make some things really happen in that particular area. And then item F1, I really do appreciate and support this effort in dealing with Crossroads Apartment Complex there in District 6. So thank you, Lila Paulette, for all of your help and your assistance in that particular area. This is an opportunity really where we're helping Crossroads to really improve their image and the kind of service that they do to the citizens as relates to renovating their units. And it's time, and then this is a way too of kind of helping deal with crime issues in there too. So we're really sprucing up an area that really needs it so badly. And then item, item I5. This is another good project within the district, specifically the lap agreement for the Shingle Creek Trail, designed from Oak Ridge Road to Sand Lake Road. And I believe too that there is a connection with President Barack Obama Parkway. So this is going to be a very nice trail for us. And then item I8, the International Drive Congestion Management Project. Thanks, Charles Ramdat and others for all of your help and support in this particular area too, because we do want to help deal with the traffic and congestion that's within the I drive area. And item I9, the Super Water Solutions Agreement with Super Water Solutions. This was a real perfect opportunity, Alan, for us to have this workshop this morning because it really enlightened me, specifically with the kind of innovative thinking that you guys are doing there in Public Works. And I really do appreciate your effort in this, in this great planning and this forward thinking and this project development. So this is going to be something great for, for the city. And then on to the magic. I think the paper said you're on the brink, and I hope it's on the brink of turning this thing around and really making an effort of your goal for this first round within the playoffs. And I'd like to specifically say to Dwight Howard, congratulations on being the top National Basketball Association Defender again. And he is the first player in all NBA history to have received this award for three years in a row. So that's a great compliment to Dwight Howard. And the team, the coaching staff, y'all get energized, and let's get behind the big man, Superman. And let's go ahead and let Atlanta know that y'all are king there and move on to the next round. And then this past Friday, April 15th, I participated in the Carver Bash for 2011, which is a Carver Middle School reunion also. And I'm a graduate as well as Reginald McGill of Carver Junior High School before we became middle. But the quiet storm had its celebration at the Global Gallery at the Plaza in downtown Orlando. And thanks to the Carver Middle School Parents, Teachers, Students Association, as well as their Dean Karen Clark and Principal Wayne Green for a great event that really helped with some of the fundraising efforts for Carver Middle School. And then on Saturday, April 16th, I held my fifth annual District 6 Excellent Kids Health Fair and Easter Egg Hunt. And it was held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. And thank you, Mayor Dyer, for coming out and taking a visit with us there. This was a great event for all of our kids and our families. We also had the health fair going on at the same time. And we're looking to provide local residents an opportunity to take advantage of community resources and receive the appropriate information so that they can make informed choices regarding their health. The festivities included a traditional Easter egg hunt, and we had it in three different age groups. We had bicycle safety demonstration, Got Bikes, Ride 'Em, inflatable obstacle course, plenty of free food and family entertainment, and also ice cream. We had free health screenings that were, that was provided for the children. Bicycles were also raffled off for those kids that participated in the bicycle safety demonstration. And I'd like to thank Christine Cruz Transportation Office and city staff, Got Bikes, Ride 'Em, Marlon Potey, and the Dr. James R. Smith Center staff, Elder George Sloan Jr., and volunteers from El Bethel Temple of Jesus Church on Bruton Boulevard, and Howard Gentry of the Young Blacks in Action, and Alexis Collins of Orlando Neighborhood Improvement Corporation. A great event that was really enjoyed by all. And then on Thursday, April 21st, I attended the 38th Annual Conference of the Florida State Association of Minister Wives and Ministers Widows. And this was held at the Embassy Suites Hotel there in Orlando off of International Drive. Dr. Ingrid Bishop was the host president. She is with Agape, she's co-pastor with Agape Assembly. And Pastor Willie C. Barnes's wife, Mrs. Anita Barnes, was the presider for the program. And their theme was Building Sisterhood, Walking in the Light of God's Love. And this was a great event that was very well-attended there, and I was glad to be a part. Reginald McGill, I just miss you. You were there on hand to bring greetings as the Director of Constituent Services, and I brought greetings as well from the Orlando City Council. And then also, I was at the Black Men's Health and Wellness Expo or Health Summit, and that's the 15th anniversary. This event was held at the Orange County Convention Center, and Commissioner Linum was on hand to be involved in the program and brought forth some remarks to the people. Dr. Angela Adams is to be commended for another great job that they've done. She's with the Central Florida Pharmacy Council. Very great event. Congresswoman Kareem Brown also stopped by and was on hand for that event too. And then I'd like to announce, Carver Middle School's music department is presenting its 2011 Spring Showcase. Featured ensembles are the Guitar Ensemble, the Gospel Choir, Beginning Band, Jazz Band, and Concert Band. I was there last year, and I was just amazed at the talent that the young people had, and also the GPAs that they had too, in order to participate in this was really good. It's going to be held at the Jones High School Auditorium, May 25th at 6:30 p.m. The band deck director is Kendrick Redding, and the principal is Wayne Green. And then on tomorrow night, right here in the city council chambers, I will be having a District 6 Town Hall meeting. And it's going to be in reference to the Catalina Owls condos slash apartments. The Sentinel has been running stories concerning this particular area December of last year and then also this year. And so we're coming out and bringing the constituents here in city council, basically to talk about the issues and try to get through the issues and see what we as a city can do to help facilitate them. Susan Harris for the City of Office and Communications and Neighborhood Relations will be on hand to facilitate this. Mike Rhodes from City Code Enforcement, Lila Allen from the Housing Department, and Tammy Hughes from the city's Fire Marshal will also be on hand, and we'll have open discussion and work with the people and help the people kind of resolve their particular issues. We did receive a letter from HUD, the local office, saying that they cannot be there to attend this meeting. This is a situation where many of the seniors, 80 years old, within these apartment and condos, were able to get mortgages at about $288,000, and the units really aren't worth that much, probably about $2,000 or $5,000. So they were able to get these reverse mortgages. A lot of them are on the hook with them, and they have other problems within the complex itself. So we're going to work through those issues. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 1, Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to mention a few things going on and a few things on the agenda and a few things out in the community. First of all, for those of you who missed it, we had a very good presentation this morning that dealt with our wastewater facilities, on the supercritical water treatment program. And I would encourage everybody to go online and look at it. And I also wanted to thank our Public Works Director for doing a nice job with that presentation and also be one of the first to wish him well on his upcoming retirement. Also, speaking of retirements or moves, I'd also like to congratulate and thank Doug Gaines of our Code Enforcement Division for all of his good work while he was here. He will be moving to the city of Akoi. Our loss unfortunately will be Akoi's gain, but I wish him all the best and thank him for all of his good work and all the good work of everybody else in that department as well. I would also like to add my thanks to the volunteers that we recognized earlier. They really, they really deserve all the thanks in the world for all the good stuff they do, and I just want to thank them again. Couple of items on the agenda I'll comment on. Item C2, which is our impact fee study to look at different ways of doing impact fees. I think it's good to look at that and look at whether what we have now is the best way to go or if there are improvements that can be made to help stimulate the economy and yet meet the needs that we have to build important infrastructure. So I'll be glad to look at that when that's all done. Also, several comments have been made about a number of items, I3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, which are a number of public works programs. I think those all, all sound good. It sounds like a lot of good things about to happen on Semeron Boulevard or the Shingle Creek Trail or the Dinkie Line Trail. And congratulations and thank you to all the people that worked so hard to make that happen. I would also like to mention a couple of items in my district, District 1. Congratulations to the Vista Lakes Neighborhood Association. They did a very nice event this past Saturday for the neighborhood, well-attended, well-organized, and I appreciate being out there. And then last, next week, May 2nd, the new disc golf course is going to open at Airport Lakes Park. That's the park over just off of 436 by Frontage Road, and I would encourage everybody to come out to the opening. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. they do, and I just want to thank them again. Couple of items on the agenda I'll comment on. Item C-two, which is our impact fee study to look at different ways of doing impact fees. I think it's good to look at that and look at whether what we have now is, is the best way to go or if there are improvements that could be made to help stimulate the economy and yet meet the needs that we have to, to build important infrastructure. So I'll be glad to look at that when that's all done. Also, several comments have been made about a number of items, I-three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, which are a number of public works programs. I think those all, all sound good. It sounds like a lot of good things about to happen on Semeron Boulevard or the Shingle Creek Trail or the Dinkie Line Trail. And congratulations and thank you to all the people that worked so hard to make that happen. I would also like to mention a couple of items in my district, District One. Congratulations to the Vista Lakes Neighborhood Association. They did a very nice event this past Saturday for the neighborhood, well-attended, well-organized, and I appreciate being out there. And then last, next week, May second, the new disc golf course is going to open at Airport Lakes Park. That's the park over just off of four thirty-six by Frontage Road, and I would encourage everybody to, to come out to the opening. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
We'll move to District Two. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start with the agenda. Item I-four, very grateful to rain down from Department of Transportation, and I want to also thank each and every one of our leaders in our district, neighborhood leaders and our central business partnership, because this is not my doing, this is everybody's doing, has been the community, has been our leaders, and, and of course, our council here and our mayor. And we're moving right along. Things are really happening, so we're excited. And DOT has been a tremendous help, the staff at DOT. So I'm very thankful to all of them. Mayor, reference, our discussion this morning in reference to the second hearing, I'd like to make a little request to the city attorney to see if they can prepare a legal opinion for us on what we can and cannot do with respect to regulating content on sign as it relates to constitutional grounds and free speech. What other cases have been heard, and is there precedent-setting cases we need to consider when looking at this ordinance along with any other amendment? Not interested in putting the city in a situation where we have to spend money on expensive litigation-defending decisions we make here that might in fact have already been decided by the courts in other parts of Florida as it relates to regulating content. And finally, Mayor, I want to know what our exposure is legally in allowing the Amway Center, which is a city-owned business, to have one set of rules for signage, and then turn around and tell our private businesses that they must have a more restrictive policy on content and signage than we approve for the center along with the other works we have to do. In this ordinance, I think there are questions we need to consider making final decisions updating our signage, signage ordinance.
Okay, Commissioner, I will ask our legal department to make sure that we are fully briefed on each of those issues as we relate to any decision we make relating to off-site advertising.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And on city, on our district matters, within the military, the community is generally known that when something needs to be done overnight, my head is looking at me like you're not going to do that, and it's absolutely necessary, and it will, it needs to be done effectively and expediently. You call the Marines. So we had them here. We had them in town. On April fifteenth, one hundred and five Marines who were on, in Orlando, attending their single Marine Annual Conference volunteered their Friday morning to Las Americas Park in District Two. For me, it was an honor to be there with them, and I, I want to thank each and every one of them for their hard work and hope that they stay safe, whatever they are in the world. Semper Fi. As a reminder, the first Stonewall Jackson Middle School Relay for Life to benefit the American Cancer Society will be on Friday, May sixth, two thousand and eleven, starting at six p.m. And will end by ten a.m. the next morning. So I invite all of you to support us, if possible, to participate during the event. And since we are approaching, actually, we're proclaiming April as the National Volunteer Month, I'd like to take this opportunity to call to the front a very special resident of District Two, and that's Mr. Tom Galley. Tom is a former City of Orlando employee. He started his career with the Orlando Fire Department in nineteen sixty-two and retired in nineteen ninety-six. He has been involved with our community for the past forty-nine years. Currently, he is the Office Manager for the Orlando Orange County Senior versus Crime Office, and is also a member of the City Code Enforcement Board. Until last month, he was a president of the Englewood Park Neighborhood Association. During his presidency, he was responsible for several mayor neighborhood cleanups and the formation of several street neighborhoods watch programs. He also volunteered for his church, the Orlando Baptist Church. Every time we call him Tom, he always says, "Here I am, present," a phone call away. So this is why I would like to make this special recognition to Mr. Tom Galley. We have a lot of our good people in our district that volunteer many hours to their community, and I'm very proud and grateful to all of them. But I encourage all of them to please continue in doing so. And the plaque reads as follows: "For your devotion and unconditional commitment to your community for the past forty-nine years, your dedication has not gone unnoticed. You are a true hero of our community." Presented to you by Commissioner Tony Ortiz, City of Orlando.
Mayor, if you might.
And if possible, if our community leaders will come up to, to go and have a picture with him.
Call him out, Tommy.
That's right, get him involved.
He's shy. And the shortest one is in there. Yeah, don't have to get close.
Look at all of the gaps in there.
Yeah, yeah. See, we got him.
Just one last item, I guess. Since I already called upon them, I'd like to acknowledge all, all our community leaders that are here visiting with us today. So if you want to stand up to be acknowledged, please. Come on, guys, you're shy, community leaders. Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me cover a couple of quick things on the agenda and then some community notes. First, I want to thank the work for our staff on the Dinky Trail. I know that we are moving forward on this. This is one of those procedural issues, but I'm excited about that moving forward and the work that was done. Looking forward to using that. And Commissioner Sheehan, if it's not a violation of sunshine law, I'd love to have us take a tour first together on that, if that's possible. Also on I-nine today, I want to thank Allen for your work and the work of the S-C-W-O, Squo. I just, I can't do it, but, supercritical water oxidation. I appreciate your work and appreciate this as a way for us to look forward. It's a good example of your leadership and the leadership of, of your entire staff. So thank you very much for that and look forward to endorsing that today. In the community, let me cover a couple of things I think are important. The first is that the College Park Rotary is having their annual Taste of College Park this week. I mentioned it's my Rotary Club, and I get a chance to, to share a couple of things. But most importantly, we raise enough money that goes back into the community. This year, we'll raise about twenty-five thousand dollars. It goes right back into the schools and the community surrounding College Park, as well as our national support program of Polio Plus. So I'm excited about that, and if you get a chance to attend, please come on over. There are two American Cancer Society Relay for Life events coming up this weekend in Baldwin Park and at Edgewater High School for College Park. I encourage everybody to get involved. I'll have the opportunity to be at both of those, but if you've got friends who have been affected by cancer, and I can't imagine anybody that I know that does not, please come get involved and let's support cancer research. This Saturday night also is the inaugural Hall of Fame for Edgewater High School. They'll be recognizing some really neat people in our community, my former baseball coach, Coach Maples, and then as well as some very instrumental people who are graduates of Edgewater High School. There'll be twelve inductees. We're excited about that, about a chance just to share another community-building effort in our community. Our Main Streets have got some things going on this Saturday night. Emmanuel Episcopal Church in Audubon Park will be hosting the Yale Whiffen Poofs. If you didn't get a chance to see some of the stuff coming up in the last couple of shows, but there's a a cappella group TV show that was a while back. Whiffen Poofs are part of that. That's the Yale Men's Choral Group. So please come get a chance to enjoy that. They were at the NBC show, I think it's called The Sing Off. And then on Friday, May sixth, the Ivanhoe Village will be having their first Friday's art stroll. And then on May seventh, College Park Main Street will be hosting Dancing in the Streets over on Edgewater Dry. We're excited about that. And let me conclude with this. It's Mother's Day coming up, and we won't meet again until after Mother's Day. But let me encourage you to bring your mother to Lou Gardens on Mother's Day. They get in free. And it's an opportunity to enjoy the gardens, enjoy the opportunity over there, enjoy the great gardens that we have. More importantly also, to honor your mother, so. And that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have deleted item A-four, or pulled it. So is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ing's on the consent agenda less, item A-four. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We are now on to hearings, ordinances, second reading number one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending Chapter fifty-six, City Code, transportation impact fee by amending section fifty-six point one-five to provide a limited exemption from the payment of transportation impact fees for specified changes in land use by amending section fifty-six point oh-six to reference the exemption, providing severability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ing, second by Commissioner Diamond. Is there anyone from the public that wants to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing done, all in favor indicate so by saying aye. Those opposed, and so the motion carries. I can't remember whether I said motion carries on the consent agenda or not, so if I did, I'm going to be repetitive, and if I did not, the motion carried on the consent agenda unanimously.
Is it the beard?
It could be, Commissioner. Or it was a lot of talk about sludge this morning, one or two.
From poop to profit.
All right, there you go.
You like that?
Yeah, okay, so no, no marketing needed. There it goes.
There you go, absolutely.
Okay, let's see. Item two on the creating a ordinance relating to downtown signage districts. I guess we need to go ahead and read that, and then I'll take a, a motion from Commissioner Ortiz.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to signs, amending Chapter sixty-four Orlando City Code to establish Part Eight relating to downtown signage, creating downtown signage districts with special signage provisions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances in action, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Okay, and then Commissioner, there's motion and a second on the ordinance. Commissioner Ortiz, you're recognized for a motion to defer this item to a later council meeting.
I move to postpone, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Byron, did we want to do a date certain for what? What date?
Date.
Okay, our next council meeting. All right, do you accept that as an amendment to the motion, Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then motion and a second, and the motion is restated to make it a date certain to our next council meeting, which is May ninth. Discussion all in favor indicate so by saying aye. Those opposed, and so it carries. Let's move to ordinance number three. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to zoning and the development of land, amending Chapter sixty-two of the city's land development code to create the Semeron Boulevard Special Plan Overlay District, providing development standards within the district relating to building design and architecture, streetscape, landscaping, access management, parking signs, and prohibited and restricted uses, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. I have six appearance cards here, Commissioner Ortiz, and I know we had a presentation last week. Let's see, Dean, who's on that? Who wants to give a quick overview of, was it F.J.? Who gave presentation?
No, Bruce Hines.
All right, who can come get, quickly give us the history of how we got here? I'm going to call on, Kyle, did you give the presentation last week?
There you go.
I'd be the planner, planner on call today.
Okay, you're planner on call. We have six cards related to this, and I suspect several have to do with, well, actually, they're indicating that they have to do with pawn shops. So maybe you could go ahead and just give us a two-minute overview of what an overlay district is and what we have done here, and then we can have you back up to discuss issues that may arise.
Yes, sir.
All right. Put you on the spot there. I know you didn't know you were going to give the intro, but quick on your feet and you're young.
Two thousand, for you today is ordinance number two thousand and eleven fifteen on second, on second reading. The first reading of this was just two weeks ago. This is a special plan overlay district for Semeron Plan. Couple of years ago, Mayor, you and the council asked for a Semeron Task Force comprised of citizens from the Semeron Boulevard area to study Semeron Boulevard and to come up with a plan for the eventual redevelopment of Semeron. The plan was adopted by the Municipal Planning Board back in December. You approved that plan in January and then asked us to write an ordinance implementing that, and this is that ordinance. The Semeron Overlay Plan has a number of provisions related to things like signs, build two lines, tree lines, and so on, that will hopefully, as Semeron Boulevard redevelops over time, will improve the aesthetic appearance of, of Semeron. It's one of our gateways into the community, and we wanted to put the city's best foot forward. There are a variety of requirements in it, but one of the requirements in it is that there's a series of prohibited uses, uses that would be prohibited going forward from the effective date of this ordinance. This is not unlike other special plans that we've done. Commissioner Ing's had a special plan done recently as well. Many of these special plans have prohibited uses in them. The prohibited uses in this special plan area include things like labor pools and labor halls, check cashing establishments, also known as payday loan establishments, tattoo, body yard and body piercing establishments, bail bond agencies, flea markets, and a variety of other things, one of which includes pawn shops, as pawn shops is defined in the Florida Pawn Broking Act. And I suspect that the folks that want to speak today want to discuss that particular item, which is on line five-ten of the, of the proposed ordinance. I'll be here for any questions if you have.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Then we're going to move to public testimony. And I do have six appearance cards, and we will start with David Jones. You have, if you'll come up and give your name and address and direct all remarks to the council and not any single member, and you'll have five minutes to address your And if there are some number of you that are together, okay, or some number of you together that have turned in cards?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. What did I say? David Jones?
Yes.
Oh, he was the drummer for the Monkees. Okay. Sorry. David Johns. All right.
Definitely the beard.
Yes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to visit today. I have someone else who's going to speak for us. I just wanted to introduce myself and put a face on our company. We are a local company. We've been in business here in Orange County for a number of years, starting back in nineteen ninety-four. We owned a company, or a fictitious name company known as Value Pawn and Jewelry, that we operated for a number of years, sold it in two thousand and eight, and we started a current company, which is known as Family Financial, and we own and operate La Familia Pawn and Jewelry Stores, and one that we'd like to put in this particular area, and our spokesperson will talk for us on that issue. We've been around a long time, as I mentioned. We are very active in the community. We appreciate our communities, and we support them fully. Our stores are very bright, well-lighted. We treat our customers very well. We pay our employees very well. As a matter of fact, we have a waiting list to go to work in this particular location, and we are very big on hiring a diverse workforce. Currently, over sixty-five percent of our employees are of minority origins, and the remainder, of course, are Caucasian. We make sure that our stores are neat, clean, and tidy. Unfortunately, we've not had an opportunity to invite each of you to come visit our stores. I think the mayor's a little bit familiar with our company. We had an opportunity to visit with him a short time ago, and we certainly have not had that opportunity to visit with you. Regardless of the outcome today, we would invite each of you commissioners to come visit with us. You could be our guest, see what we're all about, see how we operate, the cleanliness and appearance of our stores, how we treat our employees, how we treat our customers. We are a Gallup client. Most of you are familiar with the Gallup poll. They make most of their money through their consulting, and we're one of their clients. We're in their world-class category based on all the customers they have worldwide as it relates to the appreciation of our customers as well as our employees. We do those surveys each year to make sure that we're doing the right things for the employees and for the customers. So again, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today, and please accept the invitation, regardless of the outcome, to come visit one of our stores. regardless of the outcome, to come visit one of our stores. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Michael Murphy with the law firm at Greenberg Trog, here on behalf of La Familia Pawn and Jewelry. They received the notice last Friday from the Building Planning Department that this was going to come up today in today's hearing. They've been scrambling since that time to, to prepare and to appear to here today. They are on the verge of opening a pawn shop. As Mr. Shepherd has indicated, Section H5 of the statute of the ordinance prohibits pawn shops. La Familia believes that it should be considered an existing pawn shop based upon the facts and the timeline of, of how we got here today. And I'd like to take just a few minutes to, to run through that timeline. On January 12th, they signed their lease. They were going to take over a video store which had been vacant for approximately a year and a half. It wasn't an eyesore, but it certainly wasn't an operating business. It's a standalone building on the west side, just north of Curry Ford. On the 1st of February, they applied for their permit. And the permit clearly indicated that it was in the name of La Familia Pawn. They also applied for a, a signed permit as well, also indicating what the use of the building was going to be. On the 21st of February, the permit was granted, early start was granted, and on the 22nd of February, the signed permit was issued. So the Building Department issued these permits. After they issued, taking a look at, based, based upon the facts of what we've seen in the permit records and also some contact by the Building Department, it appears they struggled a little bit with whether the permit should have ever been issued at all. On 30 March, we received a call from the Building Department indicating that there should be a stop on all the work because of this potential ordinance coming up. On that same day, about four hours later, received another call which said, no, never mind, go ahead, don't worry about it. The La Familia did go ahead. They have spent approximately $275,000 in doing the fit out for the building. They've fit out the interior, they've painted the exterior, I believe they've repaired the parking lot. So they're, they're moving right ahead up to opening the building. When you take a look at some of the other records that we've seen from the, from the permit, on the 6th of April, there are some notations that the, the Building Department questioned whether the permit should be issued at all. And in fact, maybe it should not have been issued. The 11th April, as we heard, was the, was the first reading of the ordinance. And then the next notice that, that my client received was this letter last Friday, 22nd April. And when La Familia entered their, entered their lease in early January, there was no prohibition on pawn shops. They acquired the rights to the vacant building. They had plans to go ahead and open their business. They applied for their permit, let the Building Department know exactly what it was they were going to be operating, just based upon the name, but based also upon the signed permit. And when we, the Building Department was definitely aware that it was going to be a pawn shop. And it appears they were also aware of the possibility of this ordinance being passed. So in reliance on the permit, La Familia proceeded. And as I said, they spent about $250,000 to $275,000 on the improvements. Now, although they have not opened to the public yet, they have begun the process of, of getting ready to open. And what they've done is, obviously, they've done the improvements. They've hired employees, at least one of whom is from this, from the same area. So they are, they are getting ready to, to start, to start doing business. Now, the ordinance says that it is effective upon passage, and that really, that really is the rub. After moving forward to trying to open this business, if the ordinance would be passed today without a recognition of the efforts of La Familia to open and the fact that they should be exempt from it, it could be a complete loss of their, their property rights. Certainly understand the city's desire and ability to pass ordinance and to do these, these special overlays. And, you know, if this ordinance had been passed a year ago, it would be a whole different story. If this ordinance, if the Building Department had not issued the permits and had said, no, we can't give you these permits, and no, you shouldn't go ahead and spend $270,000 to get going, that would be a different story. But, but that isn't the story. Leaving aside the legal arguments of, you know, takings and whatever, just from a fairness perspective, it seems fundamentally unfair to have a business who has followed all the approval processes, had those things stamped along the way, and be on the cusp of opening. As I said, the building, the signed permit is not final yet. That's, I think, going up maybe as we speak. But they are in a position where they'll be moving forward to get a certificate of occupancy within the next week or so. After that, they will also have to get a, a business license, which is going to be for a pawn shop. And so we are looking for the exemption from this, from this ordinance such that we will be able to get the certificate of occupancy, and such that we will be able to then get the business license to, to continue doing our business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ortiz?
I'm going to wait for everybody to speak, and then I'll go ahead.
Okay. Kyle, I think there's probably a number of questions that need to be answered, but why don't we get all of the public testimony and then bring you back up. Louise?
Now Louise?
My name is Louise Weatherholt, and I live at 6007 Navajo Way in Orlando, which is just a few blocks off of Semeron Boulevard. I have lived in my home 54 years, and I want my area to stay nice. Unfortunately, I feel a pawn shop will bring crime to the neighborhood because people will be starting to break into homes more than they do now to steal small items that they can take to the pawn shop and pawn. I hope you will reject this. What we need in our neighborhood is some nicer shops, some nice restaurants, and upclass, upscale, to keep our neighborhood what it was 50 years ago, and not like it's deteriorating now. I hope you will reject this pawn shop. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Jim Knowles. Todd Catella.
Hi, I'm Jim Knowles. I hope it's okay to read this statement because I'm slow on my feet. But here we go. I would like to speak in favor of the ordinance. My name is Jim Knowles. I am the president of Dover Manor Homeowners Association. However, I'm not speaking in their behalf because I couldn't get the emails out and back quick enough. So rather as a private and concerned, no-count citizen who is very proud of the city beautiful and the work done by the mayor and this commission that's always trying to live up to that name. Excuse me. I've read the complete ordinance and must admit that some of it's over my head. However, I can see the purpose of it and the hard work that has involved you and a lot of other smart people in the city agencies that help in planning of a complicated ordinance like this one. I think I better see now why some of the bills and laws that our government enact do not always accomplish the intended purpose. There are so many unforeseen circumstances, like we're hearing this morning, this afternoon rather, and along the way and, and after the fact. It must be a lot worse when there are, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I won't say it anyway. It must be a lot worse when there are thousands of pages of a law, and the lawmakers who have not even read it say, let's just pass it and then see what it says. In my mind, after all is said and done, what you're doing here today, although certainly is not simple and will not please everyone, is a worthy endeavor. In my mind, the real purpose of this ordinance is to make our city a better place to live. Respectfully, I would ask that you vote this into law. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Catella, and then the last card is Juan Triang.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the time. I've been keeping an eye on my neighborhood. I'm a relatively, although I'm 50 years old, I rented for a long time in downtown Orlando. I had a great rate of rental, and it didn't justify me to purchase a home. But about seven years ago, I did buy my first home, and, in the Lake Barton Village area. And since that time, I'm looking at things through a different perspective, where I want to take more pride in my ownership. I want to make sure that my neighborhood looks good. I want to make sure that if there's activities going on in my neighborhood that are not conducive to good community, that we're working in conjunction with the OPD and our Neighborhood Watch Association to make sure that those things, improvements are made. When there are cleanup efforts that need to happen, we're making sure that those cleanup efforts are happening, and we're contributing to cleanup efforts of our neighbors, even in the county. I assisted in District 3's county effort in Zalea Park cleanup a couple of, two, three weeks ago. So we want our community as a whole, from grant to colonial, to be a better entranceway for the city of Orlando. And what you've proposed, and what Commissioner Ortiz and the, and the Semeron Business Partnership, I joined the Semeron Business Partnership as a Neighborhood Watch Community Leader in my area, because I want to make sure that we're improving not only the, the behind the scenes, but also the, the appearance. And when, when you have an appearance in a neighborhood that is presentable, then you're more apt to have pride in maintaining that. And then you look at, how can I improve the crime situation and move that away? Can I get rid of this drug dealer? Can I get rid of that guy that's doing a chop shop? And so we even had at the, right at the door, right at this door of Calmia and Semeron, across the street from Florida Highway Patrol, someone stole a car in Volusia County and brought it to our neighborhood, ran through our neighborhood at 2:00 in the morning, tore up all sorts of things. They finally caught the folks. But if you have a business that encourages activity that is not good community, then that's the kind of business we prefer not to be in our neighborhoods. And we've, we're, all we're asking is, from grant to 50 at this point, make this an, an area that's an entranceway, that's representative of what the city beautiful is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Juan Triang.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam Clerks. My name is Juan Triana. I am the president of the Semeron Business Partnership. But I'm, I'm more than that. I, I am a resident of District 2. I live on Semeron Boulevard. I live and work at the place of business that my wife and I run. So I'm three things: resident, business manager, and president of the Semeron Business Partnership. The Semeron Business Partnership is a group of concerned people. We are not just business people. We are neighbors. We are merchants. We're churches. We're schools. In fact, several of our members are here today to, to represent and speak in favor of this ordinance 2011-15. A few years ago, my business suffered from a lot of crime. We were hit with graffiti night after night after night. I have a wall with a northern exposure that faces an empty lot, and every morning, I'd wake up to a wall that's two city blocks long, covered with vandalism, graffiti of an obscene nature, graffiti that said to the police, catch me if you can. And not only was I having problems with vandalism, but I was also having problems with drug deals taking place in my place of business, in my parking lot. I used to have a water fountain that I had outside of our office for our customers' use, you know, to refresh and hydrate. And that water fountain was being used by drug dealers and those who purchased drugs as a decoy to conduct their transactions. I got fed up, and I wrote a letter to Commissioner Ortiz. I said, Commissioner, I need your help. Well, he said, well, let's help each other. Join me on the Semeron Boulevard Task Force. And that's when I became involved in the Semeron Boulevard Vision Plan and worked with Commissioner Ortiz, worked with Mr. Hosfield, Jason Burton. And a lot of work has gone into this special ordinance. It is exactly what our community needs. If we don't do this, we will continue to turn into a ghetto. And I, for one, do not want to live and/or run a business in a slum and blighted environment filled with criminals. This ordinance is, is, is the beginning of the changes that need to take place in our community. Our community is the gateway to the airport. What an embarrassment to allow it to be as it is now. We need to fix it. We need to clean it up. We have two major issues along the Semeron Quarter, one of which is crime, the other is just ugliness. We are totally unappealing. We need standards. We need cohesiveness. We need more and better choices for our consumers. We've got pawn shops already. We don't need another pawn shop. La Familia, they've got a pawn shop at Curry Ford and Conway. You know, they want to build another one within a mile radius. If, if, if we are filled in line with nothing but pawn shops, who wants to live in a neighborhood like that? Who wants to open up a reputable business in, in such a, an environment, in such a landscape? Again, I state and reiterate, I'm in favor of ordinance 2011-15, and I ask the mayor and all the city commissioners to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one addition, one. Roger Selch.
Yes, my name is Roger Selch, and I'm here in favor of this ordinance. And I represent basically two parties. I'm here as the Dover Shores East residents of our community, about 400 homes. I am on their board of directors, and I am also their lead in the crime watch for all these 400 homes. And I manage all these street captains. I will be brief in that we met with Val Demming in February. I had five concerns. Three of those was closed out. The one that's still open is the issue of this meeting that we're talking about right now, and that's with these pawn shops, these money shops. In fact, at our intersection, which is South Conway and Curry Ford, we now have six, six of these shops, and we don't want them. You go look back three or four years, and you'll see there wasn't that many at all. So we have another meeting with Val Demming next month to discuss how we can, you know, resolve this issue. We're concerned about urban decline. We're concerned about value of the business to the community, and we, we work very hard to keep it that way. I think a lot of you'll notice, we, with Tony Ortiz's help, painted and beautified the wall along South Conway, and we're proud of that. And we also worked with a lot of other issues concerning our neighborhood. So again, that's why I'm here, to represent our residents, and we want this ordinance to, to pass. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that wants to testify? All right. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be brief. I'm proud to serve a community that is united. I'm proud to serve a community that I'm proud to call my community. With leaders like this, which I check with, and we get together pretty often. We formed, when I was elected commissioner, a Neighborhood Leaders Council and a Business Council that today we're proud to call the Semeron Business Partnership under the leadership of Mr. Juan Triana. And we have all these community leaders who I check with. They are indeed a council, and they give me advice. And we check with our community, and we keep our community in a very proactive way informed of what's going on. We work together, and everything we do, and we decide we do it as a family. There's no ill intention, and there's no personal basis here for not wanting or not, or we're not rejecting in a basis of your business being a bad business per se. But the community have spoken, and they elected me to represent them, and that's what I'm doing. So therefore, that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Lyman?
Mayor and council, and special to Commissioner Ortiz. I don't think this, the, this ordinance passing is, is going to question, because we've waited, I know I have. I've been on this council 13 years, and we've been waiting for something unique and real special for Semeron and that whole eastern area. So I'm, I'm proud to support it. But I do have one question that was not clear to me before, and that was the timeline of this particular application. That's the only concern- That's the only concern I have and if we are to prohibit this company and they had already started a process, do we reimburse them the $200-plus thousand, which I don't have a problem with, but I do want that explained. I mentioned Commissioner Ortiz, he has all the support in the world here to change that neighborhood, to improve that neighborhood. We have so many overlay districts. We have one in Commissioner Sheen's community. We have prohibited uses right downtown when we stopped all the tattoo parlors and all the bars for the little kids. We have one over Paramore when we stopped the social services. So the city is accustomed to overlay districts and my only concern was just that particular issue that Mr. Johns raised.
Kyle, Commissioner Sheen, can I get some of those questions answered or does yours relate to that as well?
Yeah, it relates to that.
Okay. Kyle, I think there's widespread sentiment to obviously support Commissioner Ortiz. He's worked, Ortiz, he's worked very hard with the Semeron Business District and the neighborhoods surrounding and one of the prohibited uses is pawn shops and we are certainly free to prohibit that use. Can you tell us the legal analysis related to the facts related out, related to La Familia and their application and wherever they are in the building process?
Yes, sir. If you'll just give us a little forbearance on one thing, and that is, given the chance, depending on your actions today, that we may be in litigation. I mean, that's one of the possible outcomes of what occurs today. I'd be a little circumspect about the legal analysis because I don't want, if they do feel that they have to sue us, I don't want to give them our thoughts, okay? But having said that...
Well, well, well.
If we're called upon to defend an ordinance and that's what we're going to do, then I'll have to sort of beat around the bushes a little bit. But having said all that, the way our zoning code works is if you have a prohibited use, the use becomes prohibited as of the time the ordinance is adopted. So in other words, this ordinance is effective immediately, like most of our ordinances are, okay? Which means if the use is not active and open, meaning they're doing pawn shop stuff open to the public, which I think we've heard that they are not, they don't have, for example, a business tax receipt as of today, they don't have a certificate of occupancy as of today, then their use would be prohibited, meaning they could not open a pawn store tomorrow. They could open up any number of other retail stores that are not inconsistent with the ordinance, but they could not open a pawn store, okay? Now, the sticky wicket we're in here with this one is that while the ordinance drafting has been widely publicized, the task force work has been widely publicized. Many of the folks that are on the task force and are part of the Semeron Boulevard Partnership are business owners and property owners along that area. This has been no surprise and no secret. The question is, is can someone run very quickly and try to run underneath the, underneath the line right before an ordinance is adopted? And you've got competing legal issues here. On the one hand, government is allowed to say, "There is an ordinance that is pending. We are drafting it and we're moving towards it. So if you're out there, don't bother coming to us." That's the pending ordinance doctrine. But that one actually doesn't apply here in my mind. And the reason is, is that they're not already open. So we can tell them, "No, you may not open tomorrow." Now, what we can't do is prohibit them from getting a permit to do general improvements that might be consistent with other retail uses. That they can do. So that is the reason we could not, up to this date, prohibit the permit that they've asked for. Now, will they have a damages claim against us? They might and it'll be incumbent upon them to bring that and make that claim to us and we'll assess it at that time.
You mean, it's probably not a very good claim, but they might have a claim, right?
Well, I don't, I don't think it is. That's just, that's just my opinion. But, but the question before you is one of fairness, is do you believe that they should have been on notice that we were moving this ordinance to you and should have found somewhere else to begin their work?
Commissioner Sheen, did you have follow-up to that?
Well, I mean, and I didn't overlay to Commissioner Ortiz because I had these awful condo duplexes which were overtaking my neighborhood and we did a special plan to try to stop them. But unfortunately, I had to allow all of the ones that were already in the pipeline and, you know, as a result, I've got foreclosures all over the neighborhood with a dreadful use and they're just the worst things in my neighborhood, but they still got built. So it seems like it's been inconsistent that, you know, anything that was already underway, you know, with the condo duplexes got built and then, or the tandems, and now we're saying that we, you know, it just seems inconsistent to me. And if it's just one, you know, but I don't know if we can establish some kind of a cutoff date or something like that. I mean, that's my only concern because if they had pawn in their application, you knew what it was and, I mean, I knew these horrible condo duplexes were coming up, you know, I mean, I knew what they were and we tried to, you know, in tandems, we tried to do what we could to stop them. But, you know, it just seems like we've been inconsistent and I want to make sure that we're consistent. And Commissioner Ortiz, I know you've done a great job on this and I want to support you, I just don't want to open us up for litigation, you know, later on. If we're just talking about one, if there's a way to go ahead and close the loophole and make it completely clear, because I'm gonna tell you, I had a bunch of those darned things come in for application between the first and second reading. Luckily, it doesn't appear that you had that, but I had a bunch of them and they all got built and they're all in foreclosure and they're all ruining my neighborhood. So I want to help you out here, but at the same time, I want to be consistent with how we've applied this. So if we, I just want to, just as a, you know, scenario, okay? If we were to find in this particular situation that we just got one in the pipeline, so to speak, is there a way to codify this one without allowing any others?
Yes, ma'am. Well, there's two, two things you can do. One is you can do nothing just past this and the executive branch of the government can take the position that they are grandfathered and this prohibition should not apply to them because they are so far down the pipe. They're so, they've spent so much money. We can do that as a government. We can say that you are now a legally existing but non-conforming use, which means that they would not be able to, say, relocate or close and then reopen, but they could stay. That is one of the options available to you. Though, let me just say something real quick about the tandems. There might be a little bit of a distinction there between that and in this case, in that we're talking about non-conforming structures versus non-conforming uses. Here, the structure is conforming and everything about the construction is conforming, okay? Here, we're talking about the particular use they're talking about, which is a pawn, pawn shop. That's the only thing that would be prohibited, whereas in the tandem case, it is the structure itself plus its use that was prohibited.
Okay, well, that does clarify the discrepancy there, but like I say, I mean, I still do have, it still gives me a little bit of pause in terms of the procedure and if they had pawn in the name, you know, you would think somebody would have said, "Eek, we're not gonna allow these soon and should, you know, should we have caught it sooner?" That's the only thing.
See, here's what happens is, is you have a zoning prohibition that's coming through from the zoning department and you have the permitting department and their view of uses is different than the land use view of uses, okay? They look at uses as a building code use and so all they're really concerned about is are you meeting the building code requirements as it relates to retail like pawn, not pawn or anything else? So that's, that's kind of the issue there.
Mayor Diamond?
Okay, I've got Commissioner Lyman and then Commissioner Engs.
Rather than trying to solve a legal issue since you think we may be sued, I'd like to call for a question. You know we're gonna, we're gonna pass this ordinance and let the legal part be left up to the legal department.
Okay, sounds fair.
Commissioner Engs, any thought other than that?
I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Yes, sir, Mayor, and this really caught me off guard. I didn't know we had a business that was out there that has made application and this sort of thing and they just happened to be a pawn shop. And I don't know what their motives were as it relates to trying to get in before the ordinance actually passed. And it's kind of a sticker shot to me, you know, because I'm hearing about it the first time. Now, Jason Cyril, Cyril came to see me in regards to pawn shops and that was existing pawn shops and whether or not they would be grandfathered in and this sort of thing. So I heard his particular argument, et cetera, but this is the first time I'm kind of hearing about this today and it causes me pause from the standpoint of just fundamental fairness. I like the option that you had just spoke of, you know, from that perspective. I do understand what you're trying to do, Commissioner Ortiz, and specifically that particular area and get it all cleaned up so that you can maintain, because, you know, we're doing the same thing in the Washington Shores area. We're trying to get it all cleaned up. But when they made application and stuff through permitting, could permitting have said to them, knowing that this was coming up, "No, we can't issue you this because we do have this pending ordinance that's getting ready to pass"? And see, and that's the other, other part, it's getting ready to pass and it's just here today to be passed.
The answer to that question is yes, they could have. They could have said no. The issue is that they weren't aware of it. Okay? That, that's the issue, is that you had one arm doing one thing and another arm doing the other and they weren't talking to each other.
Okay.
Mayor, may I?
Commissioner Ortiz?
I hope he was gonna get to this, but there's a few things that we have to clarify too, since we're bringing all these facts. The Municipal Planning Board approved our overlay back on the 21st of December. We adopted it. We adopted their decision on the 24th of January. La Familia Pawn Shop didn't apply until February 1st, so we were already on our way to go ahead and pass the overlay. I would like to know, Mr. Murphy, who's the person that first told you to stop and then told you to move on? If you have that person's name, to see, to clarify exactly what happened there. And then what I'd like to also add is, in reference to the permits, La Familia doesn't still, doesn't have a business tax receipt for the property on Conway and Curry Ford yet. So how is it that we're trying to set something up on Semeron?
Commissioner, just before we get into that, I think you have the votes probably unanimously to go ahead and pass your ordinance and if we're gonna end up in some form of litigation or something else, how about if we just go ahead and pass your ordinance and then deal with it from there?
Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you for the wisdom.
Yeah, let me just add also, I feel a bit like Commissioner Sheen. There is some pause for a moment that, that makes me think that even in the process, I would love to have us administratively work out a solution to this, but I do believe philosophically it's in the right direction in what you're trying to accomplish, Tony, and I, and I appreciate that what you're doing is not looking at one particular business, but look at a variety of businesses that are all essentially crime-intensive, if you want to call it that. So I believe that you've not singled out a particular business and I agree with that, but I would love to have us work out something administratively so we would limit, limit the exposure to the city. Okay, further discussion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so, by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Let's move to ordinances on first reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida establishing an initial zoning classification of ASD II in part and rezoning to ASD II in part for certain real property generally located at the southwest corner of Narcusi Road and State Road 528 interchange and comprised of .871 acres, more or less, amending the city's official zoning map as initiated by the property owner, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Second. Motion by Commissioner Diamond, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the, is that right? Okay. Was there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so, by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for this meeting, April 25th, 2011.